Seven oh two P M. And the Board of Education of Cayman Community Unit School District three oh two is in regular session at Cayman Harder Middle School. On Monday, July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, at seven oh two P M. Uh, and I would like, like to inform all board meeting attendees that this meeting is being live streamed. An archive for access at any time by our community members on the Internet within twenty four to forty eight hours of the meeting's conclusion. And Mr. McCully, the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And a roll call, please.
Mr. Mankiewski.
Uh, here.
Mr. Kleisner.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Dr. Lawler.
Here.
Mr. McCully.
Here.
Mrs. Simmons.
Here.
Mr. Stolka.
Here.
With seven members present, we have a call. Is there anything the Board would like to move from consent to new business? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
And a roll call, please.
Mr. Kleisner.
Aye.
Mrs. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. McCully.
Aye.
Dr. Lawler.
Aye.
Mr. Stolka.
Aye.
Mr. Mankiewski.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. The agenda is approved. It is now time for Board Superintendent Salutes. I will turn it over to Dr. Rowling.
Thank you. So, uh, summer is generally a little bit of a quieter time for us. Uh, but this evening, we are going to be introducing our new Dean at Cayman High School, Mr. Steve Lucas. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Atkins. You don't want to clap for Dr. Atkins? Once a year.
Come on up, Stephen. So, um, we're very excited to introduce Mr. Lucas tonight. I'll let him explain a little about, about where he's come from and what he brings to Cayman. But, um, as you know, all of our administrators interact and are forward-facing in some capacity. But I think it's fair to say that the Dean is probably at the front of that list, especially at a high school. Um, so we're very excited to have Mr. Lucas joining us. He has a wealth of experience and I'll let him introduce himself, but congratulations and welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Yeah, appreciate it.
Good evening. How's everyone doing? Good. Go Knights. So, my name is Steve Lucas, new Dean of Students. Uh, been in education, I think this is my fifteenth year. Half of those I taught C T E. So I was a business teacher, um, at West Aurora. Uh, I coached football several years. Um, and of course, got into, to Dean work. My first gig, um, I was just telling a couple of fellows over here, my first gig was in Chicago. So, um, definitely blessed to be in a community like Cayman, um, and to be working in a school that, uh, not only is very prestigious in terms of, you know, the surrounding areas. But, uh, has a great, great community backbone, um, great student population, great educators and faculty members. So definitely excited about that. Like I said, this is probably my seventh year as an administrator. Recently, I was at Plano High School, so very, very close down the hall, hall or street, if you will. Uh, I'm, I'm used to learning the halls of Cayman High School. So that's, that's probably what's got me thinking the hallways. But I was the Director of Athletics and Activities there for the last three years. Loved it, but I do have little ones at home. And so kinda had to prioritize a couple of things at home and make sure I was home for my seven and five-year-old, uh, Maximus and Blake, my two boys, and my lovely wife Erin. We live just here in Oswego. So very local and very, I like it. Um, very, very happy to be here and, uh, thank you all for this opportunity.
Welcome.
Welcome.
All right, that, that is all the salutes I have this evening.
Dr. Bogdan? Board members, anyone? All right, the Board appreciates everybody in attendance this evening and invites you to stay as we move into the new business part of the meeting. We understand that not everyone is able to stay for the entire meeting. We wanted to make sure that you know that this is an open meeting. So you can come and go as you need, and we look forward to seeing you at future meetings. Tonight's consent agenda contains the following information. Approval of accounts payable and payroll for July twenty twenty five. Approval of the Treasurers Report for June twenty twenty five. Approval of Personnel. Approval of minutes from the June twenty third, twenty twenty five special meeting and the June thirtieth, twenty twenty five regular meeting. Approval of destruction of audio recordings from closed session meetings from January twenty twenty four. And approval of post issuance bond compliance report in the following informational items. The Employee slash Position Report and the Freedom of Information Act Report. We'll now entertain a motion to approve the consent items listed.
Salute.
Second. A roll call, please.
Mrs. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. McCully.
Aye.
Dr. Lawler.
Aye.
Mr. Stolka.
Aye.
Mr. Mankiewski.
Aye.
Mr. Kleisner.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. The consent agenda is approved. All right, no public comment tonight. Uh, tonight, we will have the first meeting of our newly created Board Committees. The Education, H R, Community Engagement, and Finance Facility Committees were created as a platform for discussion and feedback in addition to the formal Board of Education meeting. These meetings, community is encouraged to attend. The Board Chairs alongside the Committee Chairs will provide an overview and updates to the Board of Education at each meeting. I will begin with the Board of Ed, the, I'm sorry, I will begin with the Education Committee update. All right.
That's good.
That's succinct.
Thank you, Dr. Lawler. No, we, um, we discussed about the new curriculum and how implementation going forward, particularly at the elementary level, which is what we've been focused on. We've also discussed, uh, the whole idea of co-teaching and what training as to what that exactly means. Because different districts handle co-teaching in different types of ways. And we were fairly in-depth on Special Ed and Special Ed Services and the Cayman Approach. All right. Anything you want to add, Dr. Lawler?
I just thank you, both of you, for meeting with us, and it was, uh, it was good to get to learn about the different processes and how the different departments are organized and the initiatives going forward. So we'll have more to report next meeting.
Okay, the Finance and Facility, Mr. McCully and Mr. Stolka.
So, we met. We had a small group, one visitor, but had some good conversations. We worked to lay out kind of our path forward and what we wanted to see in the meeting and how it interacted with the finances and the taxes and the levies. And, and trying to generate some simple type information for presentation and discussion. And then with the facilities, um, we didn't get into it with a lot of depth, but started looking at what we're gonna talk about in the next several meetings, how it pertains to referendum versus just general capital projects.
All right, Human Relations, uh, Human Resources, sorry. Mr. Cook, Mr. Kleisner?
Yes, we, uh, we were looking at the field. We didn't get into the weeds at this meeting. We talked about the seasonalities, what H R does in every season, the intricacies and the new process to digitize a lot of the H R, uh, into workings and make all the nodes go to the central system, which will help out. But we brought up a few, uh, topics for future done agendas, such as evaluation and what that looks like for teachers and how that impacts, uh, the students and the, and the teaching that comes from that.
Yeah, and then we also discussed for, uh, for the future, um, H R's role in implementation of new curriculum. Kind of getting into the weeds on that as well. Good, good first initial meeting and good overview.
All right, um, Community Engagement. Ms. Simmons, Mr. Kleisner?
Um, yeah, I want to thank David first for the presentation that he did tonight. So I'm not gonna share much because tonight's meeting is mostly about the website. So, and that was a lot of things that he talked about and just the work that he's doing and the jobs that, like, the projects that he has going on. Also, I'm impressed too of the fact that he's looking to help have students be engaged in a lot of this work too, because there's a long list for him to do. But I also want to thank Bill for being here tonight too, one of our community members, uh, engaging conversations, great advice. And also, um, had a lot of positive things that, you know, to say about some of the things that we have done recently and a lot of compliments about David. And as a communi- uh, Communications Director, we wanted this two, three years ago. And so the fact that you've been with us now to see the improvement, just even the website, if you haven't gone on the website yet, please do. It's just phenomenal. So, uh, we spent a lot of kind of what is David doing and what's those next steps? Because since his role is still kind of fairly new, he's got his feet definitely solid in the ground here, but there's still a lot of things that we're asking him to do. And so as he's navigating that and he's really leaned into, Bill and I, um, asked, allowed us to ask a lot of questions too, so.
All right, we'll move on to new business. The first item of new business is a referendum update. Dr. Rowling, if you could provide us with more information, please.
Absolutely happy to. Uh, so, um, as we know, we are continuing to work on the referendum-related projects and kind of shifting our mindset from referendum really to construction planning. Uh, so since the last board update, we have, um, reviewed applications to participate on our core planning teams. So these are the community teams that will be helping to provide feedback as we go into, um, into the, the detailed planning. So those individuals have been notified of this election and which team they'll be serving on. The Steering Committee, uh, which is made up of, of administration and some of our industry partners and, uh, Mr. Stolka. We visited, uh, facilities in Rochelle, Harlem, Richmond, Burton, McHenry, Huntley, and Burlington to see some of the things they're doing in terms of design, equipment, classroom layout. Uh, we've, we looked at fieldhouses, stadiums, science labs, C T E, uh, and a variety of other things. Uh, walked away with some really interesting things and some ideas that we want to share, uh, with our core planning team and then our staff as we return. And then, uh, we also developed the calendar of meetings for the P E slash Athletics and the academic core planning teams. So that information will be going out to the teams, um, probably later this week. Uh, we will be meeting every other week to, throughout the fall to, to get the, that feedback and get that work done. Uh, so what's up for us in the near future? We will be hosting the first core planning team meeting on August thirteenth. So that'll be the first time we get those groups together over at the high school. Uh, we are reviewing possible, um, industry partners for playgrounds and furniture. So we wanted to, uh, playgrounds especially, there's a handful of companies that really specialize in that. So bringing them into the fold, working with our, uh, architects and our construction manager on what that looks like. Once we get that nailed down, we will be developing a schedule for the Playground Core Planning Team. And then, uh, furniture is fairly similar, right? We want to have one partner we're working with so that we can create some consistency in furniture as we look to the future. So we're not kind of just like buying stuff at Ikea, right? This is a whole different operation. So, um, we will be working on that in, in the coming weeks. And then finally, uh, we will be developing a schedule for staff engagement. Uh, that end user is really important to us. So how do we, uh, we will be working on where we're able to get that feedback from teachers, coaches, you know, all, all staff essentially that will be using these facilities, uh, throughout the process. So that's where we are and that's where we're going. Uh, any questions?
And you're making sure that the playgrounds are gonna be A D A compliant?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So I think that, you know, I actually was at the, um, the, uh, corn boil this weekend, which is held at, uh, at Shields. And I was, uh, you know, looking at the, the playground versus like, uh, you know, where I live, we, the art district's built a brand-new playground and looking at the distinct difference. Not just in terms of like bright colors, uh, but also in things like accessibility, things are more ground level. Uh, it's just, you know, that, that's stark difference. So I, I got excited about that. Uh, even though there were a bunch of kids still playing on the playground, I was thinking in a couple of years, it's gonna be way nicer. Yeah, so.
So for P E and Athletics, uh, the planning teams, how customizable is a lot of this construction gonna be? Do, do the firms have here the three fieldhouses?
No, no, really, I mean, when you think about the fieldhouse, right, it's, I'm, I'm, so don't quote me on the number, please. Jack just lit up, so, so we'll see what's right. Uh, the entire addition is slated to be seventy-eight thousand square feet.
Okay.
Right? But inside of that, what that looks like, there is quite a bit of variety. Now, in that also includes, um, uh, our, our upgraded, um, locker rooms and moving the weight room over there.
Okay.
Which will likely be lofted. Right, so there'll be locker rooms here and weight room above, kind of like what we have now, but way nicer. But, you know, when we went to see, um, went to see Huntley and, you know, they said, well, you know, we did this and we like this, but we don't like that. So they have, they have their, um, for example, right, they have their storage built into one of the sides of the fieldhouse. So that comes into the, the, the area in which you are participating. Whereas Burlington built their storage off in a corner. Cause if you think about a fieldhouse and you have a track, there's a natural corner.
Yes.
And so they have more room for spectators and, and athletes for hosting, like things like track. So there's actually quite a bit of customization that can happen. Uh, Burlington's ceiling was much Burlington's ceiling was much taller. Huntley's were shorter. Burlington had air conditioning, which I was a fan of because it was a super hot day. So there actually is quite a bit of, um, customization and little details. And so when you think about how that's going to go together, right, the core planning team is part of that equation. But it's also then getting feedback from our PE department and our coaches and all that. And then taking all that and synthesizing it into something. Eventually, you know, the decisions are made with the steering committee. Because if you ask a hundred people for their opinions on athletic facilities, you'll get a hundred and ten opinions. So we got to take all that in and then come up with something that we fit, think both fits the needs, meets the expectations of the community and all that type of stuff, so.
And avoids the problem that those other locations said that they wish they wouldn't have done.
Yeah, I was, I mean, that was the first question I asked, like, what would you do? What would you have done differently? Or what don't you like about this? And so that, you know.
And they all had something.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions?
Oh, okay. Will we throw a maybe, uh, elementary student, fourth or fifth grader on like the playground committee or maybe invite?
I think we can find a way to either do that or.
There's something, right?
I think yes, we could, I would, I would think we can definitely look into that and how we might be able to do that.
I'm sure one of the committee members has an elementary student.
It might be fun also to do, uh, for a couple of us to go do, um, like, panels. We did that with the high school students last year, it was a lot of fun. We got really good feedback. And sometimes they're, they may not be feel comfortable talking in front of a whole room of adults, but it was just a couple of us. So that's a great idea. Make sure that Julie wrote that down.
I did.
Anybody else?
Dr. Boken, did the bonds issue?
He did.
What did you say?
I need to look at the exact number, but I do know that it was slightly lower than what we had budgeted. So I think it was four, five, two, and it came in at four point four nine. So just slightly lower. And I, we did have an update, but I can get you that.
No, no, that's, I was just curious.
Anybody else? Alright, so I'll provide, um, another public overview, uh, the second meeting in August and the second meeting moving forward.
Perfect.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, there is no action necessary tonight for the referendum update. The second item of new business is the new website mitigation update. I'm sorry, migration. Update. Dr. Rowling, if you could provide some more information.
I'm going to hand this one off to Mr. Chavez, who has done all of the. For most of the, I should say.
Alright, well, good evening, members. Uh, tonight I'll be giving a high overview of the migration for the website. First off, I want to start off by thanking everybody that collaborated. As Kurt mentioned, uh, we've been handling a portion of this through the communications office, but also the IT department was heavily involved. So I want to thank Tim Wolfe, Nick Board, and Jen Hodak for all their contributions on, uh, getting everything migrated over. Alright, let's start off here with a high overview of what we'll be discussing tonight and then I'll get into some more details about everything. So really what we're looking to do is just improve the usability. Uh, we've heard a lot of feedback from our community and staff that it's a little bit, um, sometimes too congested there at the top of the webpage. They wanted things to be a little bit more usable, a little bit more user-friendly and really less clutter. So that's what we're looking to do and it'll be an ongoing project when it comes to this website. Uh, we also wanted to make sure that we are in compliance with the accessibility. ADA was mentioned just a few minutes ago, so that's one thing we wanted to do by converting it over to Final Site. Final Site is a company that specializes in education websites. So a lot of these, this stuff is built into their program already, which includes the ADA compliance. Uh, next thing we want to do is make sure that our website's secure. Uh, this day and age, a lot of hacking going on, information being leaked, those type of things. So one thing that was important to us and is ongoing for the IT department is really safeguarding our information, safeguarding our website. And we'll talk more about that as well as, uh, in terms of some of the things that we did. Uh, user-friendly content management, that comes back to our department. That's for us to be able to manage the website. Uh, Final Site provides a lot of robust tools that allow us to go ahead and go in and change things quickly. So that'll come in handy for anytime there's an emergency situation. We'll be able as a staff to be able to go into the website and update the information quickly and make sure it's accurate and that way we can keep the community up to date via our website. Also flexibility and scalability. And then also this goes into the integration as well for modern tools. With Final Site, it's, everything is modern, they continuously upgrade everything. So anytime a new tool comes onto the market that we want to integrate into the website, new security features, those will easel, those will easily be integrated into the new website, um, with ease on our part through Final Site as the partner. Alright, so some of the key drivers for redesign were the enhanced user experience. I know Kurt likes to mention the three-click rule. And that's if you're on a website and it takes you more than three clicks to find the information, you're going to get frustrated and that's taking too long. So one of our main goals here is to meet that three-click rule, three clicks or less. Uh, one of our main focus the right now though for that is going to be the parent and the student tab as we get ready to launch for the school year. Now, the websites are already launched, but to get ready for the school year, we want to make sure that those parent tabs and student tabs are robust, all the information's accurate, and that parents are able to find the information that they need in three clicks or less. Uh, one of the things that we want to do as well as part of the communications plan for this year is create a guide for parents. So they can easily find where they need to go for grades or where they need to go for registration. Um, so that way when they go to that website, they click on that parents tab, uh, everything there is visible for them and they know where to go because they have a little bit of a guide of where to find it. That's one of the things we've heard, can't really find this, can't find that. Uh, did a search for it, didn't come up. So being able to create that guide of, hey, here's where you go for grades, here's where you go to register, uh, make that a little bit easier for our parents. But again, really trying to focus on that three-click rule, first and foremost for that parent and students tab, but then for the whole website as we continue to work on it. So one of the things that we wanted to focus on as well is mobile experience. Uh, we were actually talking about this earlier in the committee as well. When you used to go to our old website on a mobile phone and you might need to zoom in, you might need to pinch, you might need to navigate over, it just wasn't too mobile-friendly. And sixty-three percent of the visitors to our website are actually using a mobile phone or a tablet. In comparison to thirty-five percent which are using a computer. So based on that, it's very important that the website is mobile-friendly. Some of the features that, uh, Final Site includes with their program is something called automatic adjustment. So really Final Site focuses on that mobile experience first. That's kind of how they build everything out with that focus of being mobile-friendly. So really what this does is it adjusts the content automatically to fit your screen, whether it's a tablet or a mobile phone. And that just really makes it easy and makes it, uh, make sure that the website functions correctly when you're pulling it up on that mobile device. Another thing that they have is something called fluid content. And that goes back to where you're having to flip your phone horizontally, you're having to zoom in, pinch, those type of things. What they provide is something where it just shifts all the content automatically and that refloes so that it fits on the smaller screen so that you're not having to pinch and zoom and flip the phone horizontally. So, uh, feel free to visit our website and check that out. If there's any concerns about that, feel free to let me know so we can continue to work on that. But you should see a much better mobile experience with this website than you did on the past one with being able just to go to it, click on what you need, the buttons appear bigger, everything is where it's supposed to be. Alright, uh, strength in security, as I mentioned, that's super important. And what's great about Final Site is they have all kinds of safeguards in place when it comes to that. Some of that is, um, secure cloud computing. They partner with companies such as Amazon and Google to make sure that they have a secure cloud infrastructure when it comes to the website. They have those firewalls, the encryption. Uh, they also do scanning and penetration testing as well. So basically they're always also testing their website and their products as well. And they have multiple layers of safeguards in place. So if one layer fails, then usually there's another layer that's in place to prevent any kind of breach or attack to our website. So I think we've really strengthened our security to prevent any kind of issues with hacking in the future, anybody getting, getting into our website to obtain information or change the information that's listed on the website, which I think is super important when it comes to branding and, uh, making sure that we're protecting our products.
Has security been an issue in the past? Have there been security breaches at any point, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, there's not been any major security breaches when it comes to the website, um, in terms of it being taken over in any way or information being changed. We've had some issues more so with our forms and things like that, that we send out through Google and, and things like that. For example, we, uh, we sent out our committee form when we gathered all the, uh, we gathered all the committee members to join the facilities committee that Kurt was talking about. And to my surprise, I went in to find thirty thousand responses. Uh, we have thirty thousand people that apparently want to join our facilities committees. So that was an example of our form. Getting hacked. Yeah, there you go. Um, so that was one example of our form getting hacked. Essentially what happened is a bot went in there and filled out the form thirty thousand times and now we have thirty thousand responses to sort through. Luckily Kurt was able to fix the form and get it categorized where we only had people that actually filled it out correctly show up on the form. But, so. But super important to safeguard for the future, uh, as well, so. Alright, as I talked about, just really streamlining the content management. Um, you know, we've, I think the industry in the whole has gone away from the days of coding, you know, webpages and stuff in the background. Everything's automated these days, AI, stuff like that. So just super important for our team internally to be able to manage the website, update, make changes anytime there's a snow day, heat day, or anything going on. And then also too, just for transition, uh, you know, is maybe a, a new employee comes on board and they may be managing the website. It's just an easy transition for the previous person to onboard them and make sure that they're, can hit the ground running and start managing the website easily. Whereas in the past, you'd probably have a lot more training to get into to have somebody manage the website. This with the content management system that Final Site provides, it's, uh, they have their own tutorial videos. Everything's there, it's pretty straightforward. It's a very intuitive platform to be able to go in and change the banner on the website. So it'll be a much easier transition for the next person who's managing the website in the future as well. Alright, we touched on this earlier here, the accessibility compliance. Um, so we want to make sure that the website meets ADA standards and then also meets WCAG. So just to touch on that a little bit. Um, the ADA is the Americans with Disabilities Act and public entities, uh, are required to have their websites accessible. And they usually follow the WCAG standard, which stands for Web Content Accessibility Guidelines. And what the standard does is just make sure that the website is accessible to all people with diverse disabilities. And, uh, Final Site provides those tools, everything's built in. Um, so that way, uh, anytime that you post something to the website, it's automatically made, uh, make sure that it's ADA compatible and making sure that we're meeting all those accessibility standards when it comes to the website as well, so. Alright, and just some of the key updates to walk through here. We have some new tabs in there, uh, for example, the upcoming events. So we revamped the homepages and the school pages. Um, there's some additional, uh, or some new tabs in there that we'll go through now. Uh, one of the ones I want to call out is the upcoming events. So, uh, we really want to make it easy for our community members to find the calendar, find the upcoming events. Um, so we've created a actual section for the website that houses that information, which just makes it easier to find and a little bit easier to follow through and go through the information. Uh, we already talked about the simplified navigation. I'll touch on that a little bit more in the next round, uh, the next slide as well. And we talked about the enhanced, um, accessibility features for ADA. Um, so new features for families as well. Uh, we identified a need for having a back-to-school resource section. So on the homepage now, we tried to declutter the top, but then at the bottom, we've tried to add some additional information that might be helpful to families, that being the back-to-school resources. So this is where families can go find their, uh, list for materials that they need to buy and just really anything else that they need to get started for the year. And then we also identified a need for, uh, information for new families. A place for them to go where they can find how to register their student, what requirements they're going to have to go through in terms of a physical, if that's needed, anything like that. So really just a one, a stop shop for new families to be able to easily find the information that they need to get plugged into the school district. And then one of the next things we did here was the new staff intranet site. So if you've visited the site in the past, there used to be a staff tab at the top. So what that took you into is, um, public documents for, to a certain extent. I mean, it wasn't private information per se, but it was our HR resources, it was our payroll documents, it was how to sign up for insurance or Blue Cross Blue Shield resources, those type of things. Again, not private information per se, but meant for staff. And really no need for that type of information to be, um, to have an option to access it from any website and for the public to access it, because it's just, again, more for staff at that point. So one of the things that we did is we created a staff intranet website. And this is what most corporations have for their staff. You kind of have your public-facing website, then you have your staff intranet site. And then the staff will need to log in to be able to access that information. So they'll, they'll need to be signed into their Keanlyn email address, uh, in order to access that information. Uh, if they're not signed in, they'll be prompted to actually sign in. And then behind that is where they can find now all the, um, staff intranet information. I kind of put a couple of, um, uh, images there. As you can see on the top right corner of our main website is where the staff website link is. They'll click on that, they'll get logged in. And that's where you find again, documents that pertain to staff only. So a couple of good things there, kind of removing some clutter from the top of the webpage, removing information that the public doesn't need, and then putting that behind a secure website that staff needs to log into to access. Uh, work will continue on that, but that is, uh, one of the major things that we did to declutter and also make the website more secure. And a couple of last things here. I called some finalization tasks, but a lot of it is really also ongoing work. Um, we'll continue to review and update the content on the webpages. That's going to be identifying those broken links where it doesn't go anywhere, identifying outdated information. Uh, we've asked our principals and our cabinet to review all their department and school webpages so we can get a list of broken links or outdated information. We're in the process of getting that all updated right now and we'll continue to do that. Um, again, the focus right now is really that parent and students tabs to make sure that everything is where it's supposed to be. Right now, we have a couple of webpages right now where if you click on it, it'll take you to a Google folder and then you need to find the document you're looking for within that folder. It is labeled, but it doesn't look like a real website quite yet, but that's again, part of the ongoing work that's being done. Once we get all the pages done, it'll just be like a standard webpage. It'll have a link to click on and then the document will pop up, so. Some of the pages that are still like that are mostly kind of the ones that aren't public-facing, more internal. As we again, focus more on the public-facing webpages and really the parent and students. But overall, the website is functioning as it should. There aren't any major issues, all the information is there. Um, some stuff has moved, so we've had some questions about where to find some things and, and we've directed them to the right place. And we've gotten some feedback from high school staff and other staff members already on, hey, we'd like to see this here done. We take that feedback, as I always say, most important part of the feedback is to implement it. So we've made some changes already and we're, we're going to continue to do that. So the way we'll do that is we'll, uh, meet with the CAC committees, those type of groups that are already established and gather feedback from parents about how to continuously improve the website, especially that parents tab to make it easier for them. Uh, we'd like to send out surveys, of course, and gather feedback in that regard. And then also get surveys, uh, or get feedback from staff and also students. Perhaps we're looking at getting some small student focus groups, uh, looking at students from graphics class, any kind of computer science-type classes and really gather feedback from them as well on how we can improve the students' parents' tabs, but really just the website overall. One of the things we want to do is a quarterly audit. Uh, we want to make sure we go into the website quarterly and really just take stock of everything. Take that feedback that we've gathered, make those adjustments, identify again, broken links, any outdated information anyways, just to make the website better. Um, there's always going to be ways to do that and continuously improve. So that quarterly audit will be super important for that continuous improvement with the website. So that is what I had for the website. Are there any questions, comments?
Thank you again for all this work, because I know there's been a lot of work, you know, there's a lot of things that we tasked you to do too. But, um, I had also mentioned this to David too, because that website was cumbersome and people had a hard time finding stuff, people relied on Facebook, going to Keanlyn Moms, going to Keanlyn, whatever, Keanlyn Facebook page. And not always that information was correct. You know, so this is going to be nice, the parents, we can start getting parents to go to here first before putting, hey, where's the supply list? I just saw that today on Keanlyn, you know, where's the supply list? Well, no, if we can get parents to start going back to the, to the website, you know, then they will get the information, the most updated information. So it's not that somebody on Facebook didn't put, they thought it was the right information, but it might not be. And you get a lot of different messages and stuff like that. So if this can be our source of truth for our students and our teachers and our parents, that'd be great. So this is really nice. I've already looked at it, it was easy to move around and stuff like that. So thank you to the whole team.
Thank you. Alright, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
There is no action necessary tonight for the new website migration update. It is now time for superintendent board report, Dr. Rowling. Do you have anything to share?
I do, a couple of quick things. So in this evening's personnel report, the board approved the hiring of Leah Rosell. I do. A couple of quick things. Um, so in this evening's personnel report, the board approved the hiring of Leah Roselli. She has the new principal at John Shields Elementary School. We are excited to have her on board. Um, she's got a pretty short runway as we rapidly approach school. Uh, but she's already been in the building. She's, uh, been, been hard at work. So, um, but we are excited to have her on board and we will formally introduce her at an upcoming meeting. And then, uh, finally, uh, the new K-five math materials have been delivered to the schools. Um, some staff have already participated in training. Another group is, uh, doing some training tomorrow. The teaching and learning team has been working hard on developing a comprehensive, um, professional development schedule for our teachers to be RIA-powered to use this correctly and make their lives easier. So we are excited about adding this new support for our teachers. And that's all I have for it.
Dr. Bogan?
Um, I just have a short, uh, budget update, uh, really two related to the budget. One, um, tonight as part of the consent agenda was the treasurer's report. And I just want to call out a couple of things on here. Ending fund balance, um, or I'm sorry, ending revenue to expenditure for the year right now. We ended June thirtieth at negative, uh, three point five million dollars. And in the meeting prior, we had thought we were gonna be somewhere between three point seven and, and four million. So that came back just a little bit lower. This number still may be adjusted, um, after we go through our, our audit process. One thing I do know, um, after July first, we did, uh, get confirmation from the state of Illinois that they received the rest of their federal ESER money. So we had seventy-six thousand dollars, um, actually for operations and maintenance, for some, some upgrades that we were going to use that we had to code locally. So that money was spent, but that, um, revenue did come in. So that will help out. Um, specifically when it comes to fund balance, we did end the year negative in O and M for fund balance. And so, um, it's showing right now, according to this report, about three hundred and seven thousand, but it'll end negative two hundred and thirty thousand. Just as a little preview, um, at the upcoming board meeting, I will be presenting some additional information with a recommendation to correct that, um, to bring that, that fund so we're not sitting in a negative fund balance. So I will share some updates, um, on that and then more information to come at the next board meeting. As far as the twenty-five, twenty-six budget goes, um, I will be presenting some, um, more detailed information at our next committee meeting with specific updates there. But, um, did just wanna share with the group that we have seen a little bit of summer creep. We, we know that there's gonna be some changes. Uh, when it comes to salary and benefits, we've added, uh, about an additional hundred and twenty thousand. And then there have been some adjustments to the operations and maintenance budget. Uh, Mark Peyton, our director of buildings and grounds, has really been going through that with a fine tooth comb. And so he did send me some adjustments that he'd like to make. Um, and it's sitting in a better position. He cut, um, just about forty-five thousand dollars from that overall. So there was some shifting dollars and, um, there were some purchases that were actually related to the referendum that we were able to pull off of there. So, um, that will be looking better for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Board members? Is there public comment? All right. Uh, the Board of Ed, um, topics for future agendas. Just an update in terms of where we are in getting the curriculum online, where, where we are.
I can have Dr. Lynn bring it up, remember?
And available to members of the community. Um, anyone else? All right. Closed session. The Board of Education is scheduled for a closed session to discuss Illinois Open Meetings Act, Section Two, Sub C, Sub Twenty-One and Two, Sub C, Sub One, where there will be no action taken following this session. Therefore, after the vote to go into closed session, the recording of tonight's meeting will be concluded. I will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss Illinois Open Meetings Act, Sub Two, Sub C, Sub Twenty-One and Section Two, Sub C, Sub One at seven forty-two PM. And a roll call, please.
Mr. Kleisner?
Aye.
Mrs. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. McCully?
Aye.
Mr. Stalkup?
Aye.
Dr. Lawler?
Aye.
Mr. Mancusi?
Aye.